The work session, regular meeting, August 27th, 2019. Items for review and discussion. First, A is Belton Nature Area Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, Celia and I will be tag teaming this topic in case the council has any questions. But a lot of the information is in the information form that's attached to this project. The council will recall that Gary Mallory had come to the council and had talked with the Park Department and prior Park Director about trying to do some improvements on the Oil Creek Trail and make it a access for trail users, hiking, biking, scout troops to do, skill development, overnight camping. And as staff looked into that a little bit further, it was determined that this laws that are required through the Americans with Disabilities Act, that this doesn't have appropriate access for parking or access to be able to get onto the trails. So it came back to, and also, this is an area that is in a floodplain and will flash flood. And so there was a lot of concern over the safety of accessing this trail. And so a lot of those individuals were brought together. As you could see in the information form, there was individuals from the Park Department, individuals from the city, there was, the scout leaders were there, and they all determined that, and agreed that this area is not really probably useful for those purposes, and that plan should be abandoned. And instead, what they will do is they will access Cleveland Lake, where there are set trails now, there is ADA parking, and they would be able to have appropriate access to be able to do those special projects. And that park area does fill their needs. And so this was, we were to, staff was instructed to look into this matter, bring information back to the council a year later, due to a change in staffing that we had that had to be prolonged. And so we are back in front of you now to provide you with an update and let you know that this area will not be utilized for that purpose.
Questions, comments? My question would be, we took that away from the county, right? That property, was that theirs?
Oh.
Whose was that? How did we take that? Gary, you remember? That they ceded that over us, the Oil Creek? It was through Gary Mallory that we...
I don't remember.
Gary Mallory had been in touch with the Boy Scouts and saw this as an area that we might be able to extend the trail line up through there. But because of the terrain and because of its floodplain and the additional rains we've had and its capacity for flash flooding, it was just determined after all facets were looked at that it was unsafe. But as for its prior ownership, Mayor, my apologies, I don't have that background information.
What I'm getting at is, did we mowed it and took care of it anyway, didn't we, all along? Or did the park, or...
The access onto the trails, I believe the Park Department has maintained those where the trail goes. But through that area, there are no finished trails, so that area has not been maintained, I don't believe.
All good.
Yeah, it's all natural.
So as far as I know, this has been city property for a while.
Any questions, comments? So we're just letting council know that it's not going to be a Boy Scout place?
Correct. And it won't be open to the public for access to, and there won't be, you know, at some point, there was talk of putting in a parking lot so people could have access to it, but because of the residential homes on each side of the creek and no ability to be able to actually have public parking, those have been abandoned.
Nothing else? Sir?
It's, it's still going to be city property, but we're not going to maintain it and not going to be accessed by anybody.
Correct. It is a...
Just wanted to make that sure.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Adjourn the work session. Now, we're going to call the regular meeting to order. We ask Councilman Trutzel to open with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Councilman Savage.
Here.
Councilman Lathrop.
Here.
Councilman Trutzel.
Here.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Here.
Councilman Clark.
Here.
Councilman Finn.
Here.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Here.
Councilwoman Peak.
Here.
Thank you. Consent agenda, one motion, non-debatable, to prove the recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item be taken from the consent agenda for discussion and separate action.
To move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Okay, before we get into that, real quick, City Manager, you going to tell me something? Are you going to give me a note on this?
Yes. On the consent, on the consent agenda for this evening, there are minutes from our last meeting. I do want to make note that there was a Scrivener's error on the last page, and that will be amended in the final records. That change included that in executive session, we referenced that it was legal and personnel, and in all actuality, it was legal and real estate. And so that change will be made for the final minutes.
Okay, Councilman Lathrop.
I would like to pull some of these things to discuss.
Which ones?
D, I, J, K, L, and M.
Which ones now? I'm going to go slower.
D, I, J, K, L, and M.
D, I, J, K, and L.
L, and M.
K, L, and M?
Yep.
Got them. Okay. That, do we want to go ahead and discuss those first?
Nope.
Go on and vote. The ones that we're not pulling on? Okay. Any discussion on the others? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion passes. Let's go back to the ones that we pulled. The first one is D. Councilman?
Okay, D is about the camera system. And it, I don't know, we had a contractor doing this stuff before, and in 40 months, it cost $57,270. This one here is $166,316. In 40 months, that would be $1,432 a month. It would take us 10 years to pay off that at what we're paying out. And I wonder, do we have to have maintenance on this thing? Do we have to have men to operate it? Or is we just spending extra money?
Did you, have you talked to any of the staff about this one?
No.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer these questions, and as will Celia and staff. As we brought to the council at budget time, and we discussed the need for this, this is the amount that we have used this camera. However, there is a larger need for this, but we have reduced the amount of times that we've used it because it has cost the city money. When we have failing infrastructure, it's very important to be able to go ahead and access the varying pipes that we have, whether it be storm water, or water, or sewer lines. And so we utilize the camera for that. Specifically, the most recent one have been the sinkholes and the unexpected items that we've had in Apple Valley. That is an overview. Don, if you have additional information, I'm sure the council would like to hear that.
Yes, ma'am. The prices that it shows in your information in front of you is basically, those are the amounts of money that we spent for emergencies. This piece of equipment will be utilized hopefully to find these types of emergencies or these types of problems before they become emergencies. So this equipment will be used to hopefully help us plan for the future and determine where we need to do work before it becomes a sewer backup, or a sinkhole, or a flooding issue.
Yeah, I understand what you're using it for. I'm just trying to figure out the money difference, you know, whether we use a contractor, or if we buy it, we have to have manpower that will operate it and all that, and trying to balance that out. I'm not saying you don't need it. I know you have to do it one way or the other. I'm just seeing, it just, you know, 10 years just to get it even is a long time.
So just to add to that, that as both staff and City Manager said, this is purely reactive. But if we have our own equipment, we're planning to go into neighborhoods and systematically start inspecting the pipe. And that way, we can be proactive, and we can know areas that we need to clean pipe. We can know areas that are going to have sinkholes. And so right now, we're really at the mercy of TRAC of calling them and saying, hey, can you get out here? We have a sinkhole. So it's not just about the money, but it's about providing a service and being proactive. And we will be using existing staff. We have some money in training to be able to train on the equipment. So this equipment will be heavily utilized.
Okay. So it's going to be used more than what we're contracting for?
Yes. I mean, we're busy, you know, the staff will be busy doing their other operations, but they're going to set up a program to say, you know, we're going to focus on Old Town, and we're going to try to get this portion done this year. And then we'll still do it for emergencies, but we'll start systematically going through the city so we know what our needs are.
Okay. All right, thanks. Go ahead. Councilman Trutzel?
I have my experience with a camera in a house that I was dealing with on sewer line. And they shot it out, and I saw, I watched the pictures on the camera going through there until the camera got to a point where it would not go any farther. Eventually, they had to dig up the line, but they were able to actually identify out in the driveway underneath the concrete exactly where it had broken. So, you know, if we can identify these things way ahead of time and know exactly where we need to dig, it's certainly beneficial. I got a real education on that. A lot of stress as well.
Other questions or comments, Don? Or is there something else you were going to bring up? Anybody else? Does that satisfy you? You want another comment?
No, that's...
Do we want to do these all at once, or vote on them one at a time, or...
They'd all be one at a time.
Okay. They'll all be one at a time, so I would entertain a motion.
To move.
Second.
Motion and second to accept. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Aye. Motion approving Resolution R. 2019-77. You want to read that one?
A resolution approving task agreement 2019-6 with TRAC Design Group LLC to perform design and construction phase services for the Height Avenue and Bryan Way Storm Water Improvements Project in the amount of $214,893.93.
So I'm looking for a motion and a second, or a discussion? We've got...
Okay.
Go ahead.
Actually, I, J, and K all have the same questions.
Okay.
These are resolutions for engineering and some, but it doesn't fix the problem.
Correct.
We still have to go out for bids and get other contract, and do we know any estimate of what that's going to be? Because right now, these three projects was $670,000 worth. And that's not billing it. That's just telling us what it needs to be done.
Right. That's the cost for the engineering, and they will give us an option to come back to what the different options are for these projects. And in that will include the engineer's estimates for each, whether, you look at it, you could do it like this, or you can do it like this, or you can do it like this, whatever those approaches are.
It just seems like a lot of money upfront to me, especially the one for $214,000.
Councilman Van Winkle?
And for $416,000 for the engineering, and we don't, we're not going to get anything done for that, is what I'm, you know...
Am I mistaken, or isn't the item K with the four hundred and some thousand, isn't that a shared cost? Or we have some grant money or something?
58 and Powell Project, we have 1.85 million for STP. We will be getting funds from TDD. And then we've also applied for a MoDOT cost share for about 1.7 million, so hopefully we will get that as well. But right now, city funds are going to be used for the design.
Right. And the engineering on that project is required by MoDOT?
Yeah, I was aware of that. It's just that all of these was engineering with no cost of what it might be down the road. And I just wanted to...
Did you talk to anybody in the staff about these? Did you guys talk at all? I'd like to encourage you all to talk to the City Manager, Assistant City Manager, or staff, so you can get some ideas on this stuff before we come here. So, any other stuff on this one? Yes, Councilman Clark?
Where's Cross Street Bryan at?
Bryan?
I know where Hyatt is. Is that in Hardy Meadows, or is that...
You know, my map doesn't show...
It's south of 163rd. It's south of 163rd.
You know, the name is what...
South, so that'd be in like...
So on the east?
Yeah.
East end before you get to Belgrade, and it's just east of like Remington?
So it's, it's south of Summer City, the area.
Is that where the retention pond is right there?
And this was the project name that the master plan named it back in 2012, and so, you know, it encompasses the whole area, but Bryan Way is right where the...
I was just like, in my head, trying to like Hyatt and Bryan, and is this part of the sewer bond we just passed, or is this something separate than that?
It's part of the storm sewer bond. And we do, just to add, we do have concept estimates on all the projects, and so we have an idea of what construction may cost, but we need to get in and do the engineering. So on this one, I know I'm expanding a little bit on your question, but right now, the price for this estimate is about $1.6 million in storm water improvements and about $500,000 in street improvements.
Is that including this issue we're voting on right now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Savage was just asking me, on items I and J, the funding on those, and the funding is coming from the bond issuances?
Yes.
Okay. More questions on, I guess, D, I, and J? Are those the only ones left?
No.
No. Yeah, K? No, K doesn't include in that one, does it?
Yeah. Well, I, J, and K are all the same thing. They're all engineering.
I, J, and K. Okay.
Yeah, they're all basically the same. You answer one, you usually answer all of them.
Okay, so, discussion, go ahead.
I mean, clarification. I guess I'm trying to figure out, is the Hargis Lake one not very, I mean, that's so much less than the other two. I just want to know...
So, Hargis Lake could be our most expensive... Thank you, Chief. Our most expensive storm water project, but the reason why we're just taking a look at, we're just spending a little bit upfront to look at concepts because we don't know which way we're going to go. And so it makes more sense to, you know, get some surveying and background data and get an idea of different options, and then we can decide, you know, we'll bring it back to council, we'll decide what option, we'll talk to the citizens, and then we'll move forward with design, and then we'll know, have a better idea of what the design and the construction costs will be.
There'll be a bigger charge in the future than what you're basically saying for design.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
More questions? So we've had a motion and a second for I?
You did not get a motion.
Let's get a motion for I?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. J, a motion approving Resolution R. 2019-78.
To move.
Second.
Don't you want to read it? Do you want her to read it? Yes, he wants her to read it.
A resolution approving task agreement 2019-4 with Olson to perform conceptual design development of storm water improvements for the Hargis Lake Storm Water Improvements Project in the amount of $39,760.
Present.
Motion and second. Discussion. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion passes. And now we turn the page to...
You got to do another one, Mayor.
Yeah, another one. K. We're up to K. Motion approving Resolution R. 2019-79.
A resolution approving a design services agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated to perform engineering and design services for the Route 58 and Powell Road multimodal traffic relief project in the amount of $416,307.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Councilman Lathrop, this was one that you pulled too?
It was all...
Oh, it's all together?
We included all of it in the three.
Okay, yes, sir.
Can I ask a question against the staff? My question just gets into, we have three different people doing, is it better to do three different companies? I'm assuming they're all trying to do the same thing? Is it, I mean, I don't know, I guess I'm just trying to figure out why there's three different companies and not just one doing all three of them. Is it all bid projects? Is that why it ended up this way, or...
We're using our on-calls, and we have nine storm water projects for storm water bonds that we're going to be using, and so we're spreading the work out. This 58 and Powell Project, because we have the MoDOT funds, we have to go through the request for qualifications process, and based on that, we selected HDR Engineering for that. And so that's kind of how we're doing it. Plus, if we give all the work to one consultant, you know, then...
I didn't know if there'd be a better price if we had...
Good staffing, you know?
Let her speak. Go ahead.
It's, you know, the same staff may be working on it, we may not get the schedule that we want. And so we use the qualifications to select the consultant and then go from there.
I just didn't know if there'd be a better price if one consultant did all three compared to three different consultants. That's my little question.
Well, and then the other thing is that in Missouri statute, we can't hire an engineer for professional services. We can't base it on cost. We have to select them on qualifications or a qualifications process like we went through for on-call, and then we negotiate the price. So we have that option to negotiate and go back and forth, but we can't select them based on price.
Okay. Did you talk to anybody before the meeting about this? No, Mayor. Okay. That's why we're trying to get everybody trained to ask the questions ahead of time, but they do come up during the meeting also. So that was a good question.
I guess one of the things I would ask, Mayor, is someone give me a phone number to these people we need to contact.
Oh, for the staff?
Mayor, they're welcome to contact myself or the department head.
Department head, okay. L, oh, we're not...
You got to move.
We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. L, a motion approving Resolution R. 2019...
We haven't discussed that one yet.
Pardon me?
We haven't discussed that one yet.
You can go through the motion and get a second, and then it opens for discussion.
Okay.
Again, L, a motion approving Resolution R. 2019-80.
A resolution approving the City Manager to execute a contract agreement with the lowest and best bidder per Missouri Department of Transportation concurrence to construct improvements for the Belton I-49 Outer Road Project from 155th Street to 163rd Street.
Present.
Second. Motion and a second. Councilman Lathrop?
Well, I just had some questions on this. Always before, we have got the bids first, and then give the City Manager which one we wanted to take. And this is just reversed, it sounds to me like. We're giving the City Manager the option to accept the lowest and the best bid, which usually is brought in and the council discusses it, and the City Manager tells us which she thinks is the lowest and best, and then, I can't remember ever going against the City Manager on one of those, but it seems like we're doing it just in reverse.
Have you got an answer?
Yes, I do. Councilman Lathrop, in this situation, we're working with the Missouri Department of Transportation, and we have to meet their bidding guidelines. And we're also trying to meet a timeframe in order to complete this project in a timely fashion. Our next meeting isn't until the, towards the end of September because the September 10th meeting needs to be canceled. And so we are trying to expedite this project. It would be following all of those same guidelines that not only do our purchasing procurement requirements have, but also that Missouri Department of Transportation has. And so in this situation, we would definitely be looking at the low and best bid, but if there is an issue with this, we would definitely wait and bring it back to the council. We did that previously on another project.
Yeah, I remember that one.
Yeah. So we don't do it very often, but in this situation, we're trying to meet the...
Well, this one was over $2.7 million. And it just kind of got me wondering about why we're doing it in reverse, because, and it, something new is always coming up, but...
Well, we're, in this situation, we're trying to meet, MoDOT's got their timeframes and get the information back to them, because then it has to go on their agenda for them to be able to put it towards their board for approval.
But we didn't know about this earlier to get it on last month's, last meeting.
So I may add that, is that it was planning to go on the September 10th meeting, this item and the next item, but when we found out last week that the September 10th meeting was canceled, we requested that we do it this way so as not to hold the project, because if we wait till the 24th, we're losing another month of construction. So that's the only reason that, you know, besides working with MoDOT, is why we requested that you consider this.
Is that it, sir?
Yes. And both of those, L and M, are the same situation.
Okay.
I guess the same answer applies to that one, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. So we're still on L. We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. M, motion approving Resolution R. 2019-81.
A resolution approving the City Manager to execute a contract agreement with the lowest and best bidder for the water main replacement, Pawnee Lane to South Cedar Street, West Cambridge Road to East South Avenue Project.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Councilman Lathrop, or Councilman Savage, you were...
Go ahead, let him speak. Well, this was the same as what we already discussed, so it was just a matter of why we were doing it in reverse instead of getting the bids and then taking your, what we need to do.
It is a time, a time issue.
It's just time sensitive, right?
Councilman Savage, are we going to go on this one, too?
When's it go out for bid? I guess would be, where's the, where's the numbers, or when we're going to look at the numbers? When are you going to get to look at the numbers?
When does the, I don't recall exactly.
This Thursday, we're opening the bids. And really, this one was, we had planned to go on September 10th to take the bids to council, and we're trying to get as much water line done this year as we can.
I, yeah, I don't see any major problem with that, but I do believe in the past that maybe it would not be necessary, but in the past, we've had at least a phone discussion so we got a clue where we're going. Do we have an idea what this is going to cost at all?
Do we have an estimate on that, Celia?
It was about a million dollars.
So if it blows that out of the water, or if it's somewhere in between, we just...
So what we'll do is probably do less water line, so we'll make sure that we meet our budget, and we'll do less this year. And this is an ongoing annual project, so then we would do the remainder for next, with next year's budget.
Then, what I would say then is I would just invite a phone call if I could be of assistance on numbers.
Absolutely. We'd appreciate that. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Does that clean us up with all those now?
It does.
Okay, we have no personal appearances this evening. Ordinances. A, a motion approving the final reading of bill number 201944.
An ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a home daycare with more than four children at 206 Mary Way, Belton, Cass County, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Why don't we get, who's going to be the speaker? You're going to be the speaker this, you want to come to the podium, tell everybody who you are, address, and all that again, please? And you got to turn that on, probably. It's going to help us.
Yeah, it's green. My name's Amelia Rosine. I live at 206 Mary Way in Belton.
Question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight. I just wanted to verify, when you came to the Planning Commission, since then, the governor has signed House Bill 397...
Yes.
...that changed how many children, related children, you could have. And I just wanted to verify that you were aware of that, and that you've made necessary changes or whatever, but that you were aware of that, since this changed within the timeframe.
Yeah, my state representative for my licensing made me aware of that, and let me know that my own children count in my number, so including my children, it's 10.
Right.
So, yes.
Okay. All righty. That's all I wanted verification of. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So you're in compliance with that now?
I am.
Okay. Who's your state representative?
Connie Farrow.
Okay. Wanted to make sure everybody knew who that was.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, how about discussion here? Our questions. So you're going to have 10, right? Is that what we're saying?
Okay.
10. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Can we have a roll call?
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilman Clark.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. That motion passes. B, a motion approving the final reading of bill number 201945.
An ordinance levying and fixing the rate of tax for municipal purposes for the Park Fund and for the Debt Service Fund for fiscal year 2020.
That's it.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion. Seeing none.
Councilman Clark.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Motion passes. C, a motion approving the first reading of bill number 201948.
An ordinance approving an amendment to the first amended and restated Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement and the second amended and restated Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement by and between the City of Belton, Missouri and Y-Belton LLC.
Present.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion. Councilwoman Davidson.
Would it be possible to get some background information on this one?
Yes, Carolyn, Carolyn has an announcement to make.
Good evening, Council. Before you tonight is an amendment for the first and second redevelopment contracts for the Y-Belton TIF Plan, otherwise known as Belton Gateway on Y Highway. The proposed amendment to each contract is to extend the estimated construction completion dates for the various lots that have yet to build out. On page 172 of your council packet, you'll find Exhibit A, and the proposed new project schedule is on that page. And we do have tonight here with us the developer, Mr. David Christie, if anybody has any questions.
Would you like to have him come to the podium to ask questions? Anybody? Discussion. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no? That motion passes. Entertain a motion of just the first one. Okay. We're just doing a first reading tonight. All right, moving on. Resolutions? We have no resolutions this evening? City Council liaison report. Councilwoman Davidson, park.
I have a lot. I won't read this whole thing.
It's good, though.
Okay. So with the Belray Connector Trail being terminated, it has kind of brought some more money to the table for some other things that the park wanted to do. So, one of those things is a purchase of Matrix equipment and training. High Blue Wellness Center is also getting their Upper East and South lots overlaid and repaired, so that's good. Maintenance updates, so there's new fall material at Simran Trails Playground. Fall as in like falling on it, not fall as in the season. Started removing old landscaping from east side of High Blue. They've replaced 60 feet of sidewalk. We had the carnival in the park, was that last weekend? That was well attended. The crew's still hardworking at mowing and weed eating. Rain has been an issue. They've been trying to get the roof on the Wellness Center finished. That should be pretty close to completion. They've also outlined repairs to the Marquee Ball Field, so they'll be adding what is called, it had a funny name, let's see if I can find it, baseball fines. Do you know what that is?
Baseball fines?
Yeah, so they'll, yeah, I guess it's maybe a material or something that goes on the, listen, I'm not a baseball expert.
Kevin, you want to say something to this?
A crush rock.
All right. He's got my back.
You ought to go up to the podium when you talk.
He's like, shit, I don't know what you're talking about. So a lot of cool updates being made to our facilities, and then also, we have registration for Little Kickers is underway. The deadlines are approaching this week. Sign up now for early soccer program designed for new players ages four to six years. The session begins on Saturday, September 7th at 9:00 a.m. in Wallace Park. Just meet us at the top of the soccer field. The six-week program consists of, excuse me, six fundamental practices, program t-shirts, and participation medal. The cost is $75 if registered by this Friday, August 30th, and after that, it's $85 through Friday, September 6th. You can register at teamsideline.com/belton, or you can send questions to kevingg at beltonparks.org. Save the date for our sixth annual Doggie Dip Day, sponsored by Man's Best Friend. We're going to have a Doggone Good Time on Saturday, September 7th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. We want to let the dogs have some fun, the last dive of the season at the water park. Bring out your canine companions and join us for the fun. Cost is $5 for each dog. Humans are free, and hope to see you there. And then join us in Memorial Park when Mama Mia comes to life on stage Friday, September 13th. The sunny and funny tale unfolds on a Greek island paradise with the talented cast from In the Light Performing Arts Center in Peculiar. The storytelling magic of, I don't know about that, the storytelling magic of ABBA's songs create an enchanting tale of love, laughter, and friendship, resulting in an unforgettable show. Let's see here, it's always free and appropriate for all ages. Bring blankets and chairs, but no coolers. There will be concessions. And then the last item is, join us for our third annual Harvest Bank Oktoberfest. This is fun for all ages. Enjoy a free petting zoo and interactive games, food vendors, live music throughout the day. Martin City Brewing Company, they'll have a, well, beer garden, that's what I'm thinking of, a craft show, Stein-Hoist competition, and our first Oktoberfest Strongman competition. You can email mferari@beltonparks.org for event details and sponsorship opportunities.
How about, I wrote down one, Farmer's Market, is this still going on at park?
It is. It's going on through that third week in September, whatever that Thursday is.
Third week. Okay, want to encourage people to get to that. And then Main Street Play, I saw something somewhere.
They open, they open that first weekend in September, so that's the sixth, I think, that Friday.
What's the name of that play again?
Death Trap.
Death Trap. Okay. Is that kind of like, Chief, a speed trap, maybe? Okay, so that's in the first week of September.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mayor's Communication, oh, do we have any other council liaisons? Anybody got anything? Okay. Mayor's Communication, Councilwoman and I went to ad hoc meeting at Memorial Park this last week. It was a neighborhood type meeting and talked about crime. Did you have anything there, Councilwoman Peak? Any epithies that came up? One of the ones that I got was, people still aren't turning on their outside lights. They're still not calling the police when they have a problem. You know, they put it on Facebook, but they don't call the police. So, I'm trying to think. Officer Dan was there and did a good job again. But the data we exchanged at the park is telling us that our crime is going down, and that we have arrested more people this month than we have in the previous months, and tickets are up a little bit. So, our police are doing a good job right now. So, that's the ad hoc neighborhood meeting. Then, I think I was going to say something about the Fall Festival. That's on Friday next week.
Mm-hmm.
We don't, the city, oh, you'll talk about city being closed, but Fall Festival starts, I know I talk, I think about 6 o'clock on Friday night, and we'll have, Fall Festival's a great traditional event. Want to encourage everybody to get out and be at the Fall Festival. That'll be a lot of fun. Do you have anything else, you guys on that one, on Fall Festival? Anything exciting that we haven't done before?
Not that I know of.
Okay. City Manager's Report.
Yes, the, the upcoming meeting on Tuesday, September 10th has been canceled. Some of the council is attending the Missouri Municipal League, and the mayor has a conflict on that date as well, so we'll be unable to have a meeting that night. That does open up the opportunity for the council to attend the Missouri Municipal League Conference. We can make arrangements for you if you would like to attend that training. That's, Missouri Municipal League offers great training, not only for staff, but for the elected officials as well. Carolyn, you have an update about tomorrow?
Yes. Tomorrow morning, here in the council chambers, from 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m., we'll be having an economic development educational class, if you will, for both Planning Commission and city council members. So looking forward to that. Janet Adie will be, will be leading that charge for us. I also do have an update on Casey's. They have submitted for a building permit over in Cornerstone Point, so we're excited about that. And we have some activity happening in Cedar Tree, the end cap. We have received interior tenant finish for a five guys for the end cap in Cedar Tree, so excited to see some activity happening there.
That's all we have, Mayor. Thank you.
Interesting. Okay. So we don't have, we're closed on Monday with the holiday.
Yes.
Okay. Other business? No one? Okay. Motion to enter executive session, discuss matters pertaining to the hiring, firing, disciplining, or promotion of personnel according to Missouri State Statute 610-0213, and to discuss matters pertaining to legal actions according to Missouri State Statute 610-0211, and the record be closed, and the meeting adjourned from there. Pursuit? Motion in a second. Discussion. Seeing none.
Councilwoman Davidson.
Aye.
Councilman Finn.
Aye.
Councilman Tretzel.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Van Winkle.
Aye.
Councilman Clark.
Aye.
Councilwoman Peak.
Aye.
Councilman Savage.
Aye.
Councilman Lathrop.
Aye.
Motion pass.